Okay, good evening, everyone. It's 6:02. And we're going to call the administrative board on the budget. I'm sorry, I'll move that. This is Chris White, and I'd like to discuss for these seconds an expenditure of a total of approximately an amount of $36,229. And we're going to use this money to facilitate the projects that we have planned in the year for the budget. We will allow some flexibility in the next year for the budget for the bringing of the facility costs in theater and arts. And all of the telephone numbers we have. They have that on. Okay, the second item we need to discuss is the full fiscal FYI 23 budget. If anybody here is having this conversation. Can you guys hear me okay? Call it.
To Don?
Yeah. Okay, how's that?
Much better, thank you.
All right, super. Okay, so we are now going to discuss the proposed fiscal FYI 23 budget. Does everybody have the handouts? Talking to the general public that's here. Yeah, we have, we have, just want to make sure everybody has. Okay, see, generally, we are proposing a 2.88% increase over FY 2022. I don't have the exact number, and I probably should have thought of this last time, but I know that when we proposed the budget for this year, 2022, it was substantially more than 2.88%. So we did a lot of scrubbing of the budget. We brought it down to a reasonable amount. We wanted to keep it under 3%, and it came back, and we were able to do that. So we have an increase of $107,000, or 2.88%. Okay? Some of the items on here, the big items that are differentiated from previous years. Salary from '22 has gone up $8,000. That's not a big deal. That's, I'm going to go over some of the bigger ones. And it is facilities. And also, the psychologist and speech. That's a big increase of $70,000. What happened from prior years to this year is that we were we have like a sharing, a negotiating, or a sharing with that, with the district. So the cost was less, and that's gone away. So now, we have to recoup more of the costs. So now, that's gone up. That's the reason for that.
I think it was grant funded.
It was grant funded, yeah. So the grant went away. So that's another problem. So I don't know if anybody has any questions on that, because that's one of the big ones.
Just if you have history on the grant itself, has it been placed with something else, or is it just a federal or state?
I think Chris can get it, I was going to say.
It's a federal funded IDA grant. And what they did this last year is that for SAU 16, they had a funding formula, and we would take a large pot. And then we could give it as a needs based assessment. So there was a situation in Kensington that cost more than we didn't want to go. We could use that. However, the federal funding source changed their allocation formula. And now you can get a certain percentage. So before, if we needed $50,000, we could ask for it. Yes, and you can get it because it's a needs base. Now, it's just a pot that we get every year. So it's a significant amount. And if that $70,000 is a direct result of us having to put that in our budget because we do not have that much of IDA.
I understand. Okay.
I was going to give a small piece.
I will. Regardless, I was planning that as best we can get them to go get 50, right?
Exactly. Okay. So another big increase is the assessment. And we don't really have the SAU assessment. It's based on property values. We don't have much control over that. Property values, Kensington went up. Therefore, our share for the SAU has gone up. Then we come to the other, the large, the largest increase is the facilities and maintenance. We've been proposing all these facility maintenance things as long as I've been on the board, three and a half years, because we have a lot of things that need to be tidied up. And this will be the end of all the large projects and get the school back into proper working order. So I don't know if anybody has any questions on that, but I know in a lot of the meetings, we've discussed the projects that have been on the agenda, one of which is the roof. That's the big one. So that's going to be taken care of. And those are really the big ones. Everything else, we've had some decreases, like we always do, and they can come back next year and increase. So it's up and down as far as the busing and everything else. Transportation went down this year. It was up higher. That can flip next budget. A lot of these things are just variable. So we did take some decreases, and we have some big increases. But overall, I think it's up there. And I would recommend this budget to be passed for the town of Kensington. I don't know if anybody else has any questions? Seeing none. Okay, so we will close the public hearing.
6:00.
What's the time?
Okay.
What's the question? How is this time for public?
Oh, so now we're going to go into regular school board meeting?
Yeah, okay.
That was just a couple of hearings for the money. Now we're going to start our deal.
Okay, now, we're going to start the Kensington School Board General Meeting at 6:09 Wednesday, January 12, 2022. Get used to saying that. So we called the order. We have a couple of items on here, Chris, one, two, and three. I don't know if they're now, they're ahead of the, called the order?
Those are just our goals.
Okay.
I had goals to our meeting, so if you can, I understand. Come up this year.
Okay, perfect.
Any other question about the goals? Or now, if you have time to ask? Are we going to be doing like work sessions on this? We haven't really assigned anything here. I want to know.
So we should probably have a December 11 or something.
Yeah.
We should have all our goals to something.
Yeah. Okay.
Absolutely. Allison, any feedback on that, or are you good? Okay, does anybody have any changes to the minutes from December 3? Or December 8, excuse me, 2021?
I know that we accept the minutes from December 8 to June 11.
Okay, and I will prove that as well.
I want you to please get over to the ones that you all have something to discuss.
Yes, at the end of the meeting. Correct, sorry. Okay, new business. Soul Power Project.
I'm excited.
Oh, no. I was getting excited.
I, I, I have to look at my calendar. Which, you know, is in the updates. So there's still a lot of people who are busy. It's not very clear, because it's.
Okay, thank you. All right. Second item in new business, Harold Bragg and the deliberative session information. I don't see Harold here. Yeah, I don't, I don't see him here.
I think, was he just reviewing that will be over at the top?
He was just going to review the rules and the format of how we. We got a session.
Do you want me to send him a message?
Sure. Remember?
Yeah, I was going to say I could text him too. But I, I, yeah, I think he's just going to go over what we do. It's at the top, correct, over?
It's over at the top of there. We're starting a large turnout, so in order to.
Right. And that's where it was last year during COVID as well. It's just a bigger space. Had more people. Safely distanced.
And the town is expecting a large turnout.
Okay, that's one. The scheduled February board meeting to my fellow board members. I guess it was because we have the deliberative?
So we have the deliberative on February 1. And because we allow members to go to the session after we have done these after they had a lot of debates last year, so we can do a standup.
Okay. I'll pull up my calendar here.
Can you do it from the? Earlier is that it's, we have to do superintendent evaluation set?
So I would like to have a patient to do this. How's that? February 2nd? And then what came? When you feel something, you can let them. February 3rd?
Not first.
February 4th, I think.
You told us.
It's not a second.
Okay, so we have the deliberative, and then when do we have the superintendent evaluation?
We, we were going to be discussing tonight, but then they asked us to hold up until after the joint board meeting. But then they want to do a pretty quick turnaround.
The joint board meeting is?
On the 24th.
Is it February 24?
No, on the, uh, January 24th.
As I had seen an email that there was something that it was going to be postponed.
No, that's the May 1.
Oh, the May 1, okay. So doesn't matter when we do it in February, I guess I'm saying.
Well, I mean, okay, I, the meeting, we need to have a non-public to discuss the superintendent evaluation. So we could meet at another point to do that, right?
Right.
Okay. So then if we can't, if we can't do the actual meeting in early February, we can do it later if that looks not better. Then maybe just have a competition. Okay. So you can find it? Yeah. And when? And when? Okay, just Monday, August 16.
I was going to say Wednesday, 16?
Uh, I'll be in Nashville, or is that in Nashville?
How about the 23rd?
23rd.
I think the 23rd. Great.
Okay, Allison, Jenny, and I both have the 23rd open.
That's one second.
Well, Miss Becky? That's okay. Chris, Chris couldn't make, yeah, Chris couldn't make one, and you covered for him. So it's payback.
At 6:00?
Yes. 2:23, 6 o'clock.
Thank you.
Okay, and next item, principals' report.
Thanks to the first event that I wrote on under partnership with Culture. This is the Senior Joy event that we held. Last month at Sawyer Park, it was a drive-by event. Super successful. Our fourth grade students and their first grade reading buddies made cards, practiced some Christmas carols. We had some pointsettas donated to us. And so as the seniors drove by, they sang to the cars and gave them their songs and the pointsettas, and it was super sweet. And we got lots of thank you notes from the seniors that did participate. So I'm excited about that. And maybe that may become an annual event, who knows? And maybe next year, we can get out of the cars and actually interact a little bit more. But it was successful. So that was great. Under meaningful learning, I was just highlighting our cultural passport project, which is actually honoring the Robert Diaz family this year. We're off to Spain. So we had our opening ceremonies last week. A little different than we had originally anticipated, just trying not to gather large groups of students together. So we did that over Zoom as a whole school. And Abuela and Abuela were able to join us over Zoom last week and able to answer some questions about growing up in Spain. That was, that was great. So this whole month, we'll be immersed in all different things. Spanish stories, Spanish dances, Spanish music. We had a Spanish snack this morning. Ham flavored potato chips, maybe? I can't remember the exact, they were interesting. Yeah, yeah, they were good. Last week, for their snack, they had to put a shoe out in the hallway. And then it, you know, a special treat arrived in their shoe. That was in honor of Three Kings Day, and that was, that was exciting for the kids, too, to kind of have that tradition. I see heads nodding of those who had their shoes, children with shoes filled. So that was kind of fun. And then, you know, we'll just continue to do other things. There may be some running of the bulls in a tomato fight later this month.
What's the tomato fight?
Well, no, we're not really going to throw tomatoes at each other, but we'll simulate some sort of.
That's a topic we've never had to make.
Yeah. Yeah. We'll simulate some events. So that, that will be, you know, cultural passport is just always a lot of great learning and, and a lot of fun as well. So we're excited. And thank you to the Robert Diaz family for sharing their heritage with us. So that's great. Under health and well-being, I guess it's kind of inevitable to talk a little bit about COVID. Nurse Heather has gone around to all the classrooms again since we've come back and just sort of reiterating the importance of mask wearing and hand washing and the distancing, not just for COVID, but we've got all kinds of lovely winter illnesses amongst us again, like strep throat and flu and things that maybe we didn't see last winter, we're seeing again this winter. So she's just reiterating for students of how important all of these things are for, for health in general. She was able to engage in them in some conversation about the worries that they have. They have been living with this pandemic for almost two years now, and there's still worries that they have. And so she was able to kind of provide that opportunity for them to name the worry. What are you worried about? You know, I'm worried about getting Grammy sick. I'm worried about growing up. I'm worried about, you know, just being able to name the worries, which was good. We, like most schools in the area, had our highest number of cases here within KES last week. So we did make some shifts to what we were doing within the building. As I mentioned, we did not gather as a whole school for our opening ceremonies. It didn't seem wise to bring 130 students together. We did shift to eat in the classrooms last week. So again, we weren't, we were limiting cross-grade level exposures. We did return back to the cafeteria today for lunch as our numbers have changed since last week, and we felt the risk was lower this week. So we're just sort of making those day-by-day decisions depending on where we are with our current numbers within this building. And just trying to, to stay safe. And I know Nurse Heather's been communicating with a lot of families with questions and trying to answer them as best that we can. And teachers have been working really hard to provide work for students when they're out for five or 10 days. So, you know, it's a lot of extra work on them to put meaningful work together, not just kind of worksheets or busy work. So trying to keep them in pace with what's happening in the classroom. So it's been a busy couple of weeks back, for sure. Any questions about that?
Just have the fire discussion?
Oh, the fire, yes. I gave my copy to Jonathan, but I think there was. Yep. Can I just have that one? Yeah. So, yep, the chief came over just after Thanksgiving and did our annual report. And it, the first few things are things that were required to do anyway. And he did also mention too that we have done all of the fire alarm upgrades that he had asked us to do over the last few years. So all of that is completed. The radiological response plan, I actually have a meeting with the representative from Seabrook in the coming week. So once we update that, then I will send a copy of that to him. That is something that we, that we revise each week or each year. Our reminder about our artwork covering. It's supposed to be just 20% of our wall. So that's always a friendly reminder each year to make sure that only 20% of our walls are covered with students' artwork. Any modifications, which we're not intending at this time? And just annual reports that he's requesting a copy of that we have each year. So there really was no action items for us from a facilities perspective, which is great news for the budget.
Is the, it said that the emergency crisis plan?
Yeah.
So is that, has that been done?
Yes, that actually had to be submitted to this date by September 1st.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
So there was just that one item? Or was it more?
This was a reminder. Yes.
Did you give a copy of the emergency plan to the, to the emergency management department?
To, to the chief. He is the chief.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if I have given him one since the addendums were added in the fall.
Okay.
But he does receive a copy of them.
Okay.
There are also, he also, he has access under the emergency manager, because they're all public. For emergency manager, they're public records. So they're on the database for him to be able to access a lot, because we have to submit them electronically to video.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Becky. Okay, moving on to old business, masking guidelines. We've discussed this in the past. I guess my question would be, because of this particular variant and the rapid spread, are we requiring kids to wear medical grade masks like Chris has on?
That's a question that a lot of families have asked. I know it's been recommended to families and those families for students who are returning from a five-day quarantine have been asked to wear the medical masks on days six through 10 in particular. But a lot of our families have asked about that, and it's recommended, but not required.
As far as the school board is concerned, can we provide these masks for people that can't provide them for themselves? Do we have some on hand? We do.
We have supplied the nice supply of medical masks. And he actually has said he captured a 95 that we're donating.
Okay, excellent.
We've got a nice supply of people.
So we have them available.
And they are helping each other do like, that's a lot. So they're helping each other drive them.
Okay, so no issues there at all then?
Nope. And I know Mr. Lister actually also just offered from the facilities, they have smaller masks as well, and they did start a lot.
Super. Any of my board members have any questions, concerns about what's going on?
I just, I don't know, because I'm, I'm curious. My, thank you. Is it, I, I think I've heard that surgical masks, like what Chris is wearing, is not what they're talking about when they say medical grade masks. Or is it? Is it like, I thought they were talking about N or KN 94 or 95s? And I'm a little, I'm a little confused on that. What, what are they referring to? Is what you're wearing? That's a medical grade mask. So that's, that's, that will hold, hold off the Omicron virus. And so we've got, and we have some for anybody who needs them. Okay, good. That's great. Because in terms of equity, I want to make sure that people have access to that if they can't go out and get them, or if it's just not available. Okay, thank you.
Good, Allison? Excellent.
Oh, excellent. I'm wondering if we should think about, especially given that we have some, we should think about requiring that? Because I know that some schools are starting to move toward requiring medical grade masks and not cloth. I mean, I think that if somebody has nothing or cloth, like cloth is better than nothing, is that, are you concerned about the accessibility piece if we were to do that?
So a couple of things on that. We have masks available. Do we have 130 masks every day to re-mask every child? We wouldn't, we would run out of masks pretty quickly if we, if we were masking kids every day. I think the conversation that Heather has with parents a lot is the fit is really as important to talk about as the quality of the mask, because if there's large gaps on the sides or underneath, it doesn't matter if it's medical grade, if it doesn't fit properly. So I think we have to weigh properly fitting masks in the conversation as well as, you know, higher quality as well.
If you're not, it's like it's one size fits most. So if you're a small face, they could be, get it.
Yeah. And, and the, the kids are responsible for taking their masks on and off themselves a couple of times a day to have snack and have lunch. And so it, it has to be a mask that they can manipulate themselves and fits well. So there's a lot of factors in thinking about what masks are we asking our kids to wear all day long? I mean, certainly, that, the ideal would be medical grade masks that fit really well.
Okay.
Just to re-respond to the original reasons it's on the agenda is because local parents brought the question as to whether or not we would require masks outside of the matrix that we have. But I'm assuming the matrix is in the place right now, and that's not a question. So I just wanted to bring it back to the original reason why it was on the agenda.
Okay.
I do think our plan said that there wouldn't be masks.
Yes, correct.
No, you said outside. That's what you replied.
I guess.
Outside and the gray outdoors is not required.
No.
Okay, so now we're at the public input. We have some public here. Does anybody have something quick they'd like to share with the board? No, please?
No.
You do, okay, excellent.
I'm just, I'm just, okay, your content you've had, that's not your request. So may I take your?
Yes, you can.
My name's Dan Sweet. I live at Seven French's Lane here in Kensington. I have a letter here today, request for facility use. I know that's on your agenda tonight, but not specifically my request. That's just a cover letter. Where it details what I'm going to go through there. You're welcome. I got lots of.
Thank you so much.
Yes, Seven French's Lane, yep. Okay? Not to bore you with history, but this is great. I love hearing, Becky, the feedback from KES. I miss it. I miss the cultural passport days and cherish it. It's really great that once you're out, it's, I love it.
And this director is really good all day.
They really are. It's still, it's great to hear it, it's still going. I, I'm here to, I made a request for multipurpose room time outside of, on a Sunday, actually. And just a little background on me, I moved into town in 2012. I joined KYA soon thereafter. I was actually hooked really quickly. Started coaching softball, basketball and soccer, rinse, a bunch of clinics and stuff like that all through the years. Worked very closely with Becky and Kristen and their predecessors to work with the facility to gain access here. Installed a batting cage down there, by the way, we need to get that done again. But my daughter is an alum of the school and she's now 14, frightened to say that, and continuing on to play softball. So I'm here on behalf of both KYAA, I'm still a board member, I'm the softball coordinator, was the past president, and I'm also an assistant coach on her club team, Granite State Elite. They're out of Epsom, New Hampshire, so it's a little ways away from here. What we're looking to do is have, Paige, my daughter's a catcher, and there are four pitchers, so we're just looking for a facility for them to pitch once a week. And, you know, we've done in the past, we've done pitching clinics here, so I thought it was a great way to integrate our KYAA young athletes, because they've all volunteered to help me run a clinic, so if I can have them have a workout ahead of time and then have our KYAA athletes in right afterwards, it's a great little synergy. It's good community service, it's, I'm excited to have the girls, see girls, my daughter especially, just connect with them so they can see where they can go. The crowds will be very small. We only have four pitchers and two catchers, so there's maybe six of us, seven of us in the gym, just for the pitching workout. And then the clinic itself, I'd limit capacity to five to 10 kids. You just can't have a pitching clinic with that many kids. Frankly, we won't get more than 10 softball players in here. So my, the crux of this, I guess, is the janitorial department, or the janitorial need. My honest opinion, I don't think we really need a janitor here, because I sweep the floor, I check the trash out, I check the bathrooms, I do everything, and I try and make sure that this place, and Becky, please, if I haven't done that in the past with these things, please let me know. But I understand Sundays are outside of the current janitorial coverage, and so it gets challenging. And so I'm asking for, you know, a little leeway on it, as a town organization and as an outdoor organization. Epsom is a bit of a travel for us, and most of the girls are within 10 miles, 15 miles of here, so it kind of makes sense to have something around us locally. That's about it. It's, all I need is a broom, a dustpan, and a small broom, and I'm good to go. And actually, the key for the divider, because I like to divide it with, a lot of kids in here are flying softballs in here, so I can raise it and lower it. Otherwise, I've got my application, the insurance binder for GSEs on there. KYA's binder is still good. We renew ours in April, so we'll certainly get that to you when that's up for renewal. Are there any questions that I can answer? I close the bathrooms. I wouldn't, I expect everybody to, you know, go before they go, go before they come here anyway, so I wouldn't want people in anywhere else other than the room. We come in, we go out, and we're done. So.
I mean, the only thing I can think of is just asking them to break their sneakers, which I just think of because in basketball, we're doing the same thing. The only other thing I can think of, I don't know what, I've got to refer to you.
The only, there's a couple things that we have to think about, like if it's inclement weather, there's no one here to take care of walkways, shuttling, salting, sort of thing. Like you mentioned, there's no one here for bathrooms. Close the bathroom, that's a great explanation, which I would like to do. We also have city turnway routes. I guess that's a date, but it may not be this time of year in the building that goes out. Basically consider knowing when it's sort of a long day in front of the school, people have to coordinate, it's like, walkways.
Yep.
It's like they were just saying.
At night?
Yeah. Wouldn't it be scary?
It is in the 50s.
That's okay, we play games in 32 degrees. We're all right.
Regarding the question with my mother, is that something that you prefer, they just didn't come this week, or can we just have what we have? And I mean, I'm sure you guys.
Leeway.
But I mean, I don't know what your comfort level is there.
I err on the side of safety, and if it's bad weather, we're not going to do it. No, it's just not smart, especially with, you know, little kids becoming from in-town. I've got one of our houseies from York. She's actually the furthest away, so if, you know, if the kids see bad, frankly, I mean, what, miss one once a week?
Because our clouding contracts have specific times, so that if there's a storm on the weekend, like the school has to be there by Monday, there's nothing in our clouding contract that says it could block, or be blocked on Sunday. So it's just those kinds of things.
No problem.
Yep. I mean, if, if, those are the only issues I think it's a priority, I don't know.
No, I, I'm 100%.
I think it's great.
Yeah. I know how hard it is for these kids to get out there, or maybe it's just somebody unfortunately have everybody. That's not functioning.
I know, so great to talk about some things, that's so positive for the community. Appreciate that.
Would agree with you more.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's great. I hope that we approved Mr. Sweet's request to use the multipurpose room on Sundays as is outlined by several other.
Any discussion? I think we're good. How do you vote, Allison?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
And I vote yes, you're good to go.
Do you need a swipe?
I think I have a badge, I just have to make sure.
It probably doesn't work on Sunday.
No?
So go ahead and.
Send Chris the number?
Yeah.
Okay. And in terms of needs, you know, these persons, I guess, I pay whatever I need to now. I have checked my.
So are those fees?
Maybe without.
Yeah. Was it the non-keeping fees? Your question, KYI.
Both, both, right?
But it's KYA, that's, that matters, frankly, under case.
KYA, there's no fee, but outside, we would charge a fee better. If it's a KYA organization, you're good.
It's a combination of two.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna sweat the small stuff.
She's unable to attend?
Well, it's still.
Oh, I was gonna say, Marlo's going to be here, but she's not gonna make it?
Um, I got a text, she's still there. She wants to be busy.
Okay, we can mess, we can jump over that.
Yeah.
And she'll, we should go with the budget manifest, so we can go right to the policy committee? I don't think we have anything. Remember we spoke about the academic freedom language?
Yes.
Well, that's background here, because they, we had a discussion and everybody was kind of on the same page you were, they didn't like the language.
I, well, I want to make a motion to change the title.
I thought that we did something with that.
We didn't change the title last time we tabled it, but it'll.
No, I know, but I think that the policy committee did something with that, and I don't see the corrected version on here, I just see it posted in the agenda.
You're saying you think that the policy committee changed the title?
Yes, that's what I, that's where I was coming back at. I know we had a discussion, and then I had a policy meeting, and that was the topic of the discussion. I think these are old, Chris, didn't we go over these?
It says last year, it's been over time.
Yeah, these are, I don't know why they're in the packet, but.
Would it be on the, I see what's it?
This has been, because.
We made changes.
Because of being direct with, but yeah.
But we made changes.
These changes are.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Molly?
Oh, here she is.
Sorry.
That's okay.
So do you, should we continue with that, talk about that, or should we wait and see if what you're talking about?
Just give me a second, I don't know if I can get to my Gmail or not, that's the problem. Oh, I think I can. We changed the name, but that's not a problem, because we can still do what we want to do here at a local level. And I went through here and she didn't put that on there, but I know we discussed it because it was among the other policy members that we decided that the name really wasn't fitting. So I have no problem as a board to discuss changing that name.
Okay, so then I would go, we changed the policy, the name of the policy ID to policy response to NHRS A193, call it boarding.
I'll second that. Any discussion on that?
So basically, we approved the policy because it exists in response to current law, and Chris advises that practice to have our policies reflect current law, the laws of the state. But in this case, it's a law that has prompted a lot of controversy, to the point of actual vouchies for the teachers, and that has proved to be very unsettling and stressful for teachers statewide. I find the name of it to be inaccurate and misleading, and I simply want to change it to something that reflects what it is. It's a pretty clunky name, so I'm perfectly happy. I understand that you don't like the redundancy of it, we can change it to something else. But I did want to change it to that, so that it specifies the law that it is referring to, it's simply so that it is an accurate reflection of what the policy is.
So you're proposing a name of policy in response to?
Basically, yeah, yeah, just so that it's exist, yeah.
We want to keep everything in context, we just want to change the name.
Well, yes, I just, I worry.
So I'm just thinking it's academic suggestions, academic, help me help with acronyms, this is suggested.
I don't think, I mean, I don't think we need to be creative, I just think that, I think that there is a. I just don't want to, I think that the name has a certain kind of partisan feel to it, and I don't really want us to associate one way or another with anything like that. And I think that the law has caused a lot of stress for teachers, and I don't want, I just want to be clear that this is simply a policy that we have to have in response to that law. That's it.
Correct, but we still can change the name, there's no harm in doing that.
Right, so I'm suggesting we change it to policy in response to RSA 193.
We can come up with a single word or a two-word, I don't think we need to get too wordy with the name of the policy.
I mean, other boards have changed it to something similar, it's not a problem. Do you have?
What's your feeling on this, Allison?
I just don't know if it's worth tableting, we have to see what, I mean, I don't know if it's further, is it not understanding?
No, we don't need a table, we can take action on this, what I want to do, I just want to get this.
No, I don't understand, I'm just not sure if there's other discussions, like you're saying, John, happening at the district level, or why?
No, because it's, everything in here is set, we're just looking at the name of the policy.
So that's what I wasn't understanding.
So we're not changing anything except the name.
Yeah.
And honestly, I don't know, I don't really care what we call it.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, but you were saying that the district would be able to like, precisely, or what?
Yes, because when Jenny brought it up at the last meeting, and I went to the policy committee, guess what? Some of the folks that weren't there were having issues with their board members in the naming convention of that policy. So they were going to change it, and they suggested we could do the same thing. We did come up with some verbiage, unfortunately, I did not get that on there, so again, it doesn't matter, we can call it whatever we want to call it.
No, that's.
And if Jenny feels that that's the.
It's just, it's.
The name, then I'm not gonna.
It's what it is, so I.
Okay, you want to make, you want to make that motion then?
Yeah.
Okay. You second it? Is there any further discussion on this?
That's what we just did, yeah, we already made the motion, seconded it.
Get that down? All right. Allison, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, I vote yes.
Are you going to need a copy of the law, language? Or are you going to, you have that?
There you go?
Yeah, yeah, hold on.
Oh, sorry. I was going to.
Okay, unfortunately, because of the holidays and everything, and I got an email with a few things of the policy that we discussed, but I do not see the final language unless I'm missing something. a few things of the policy that we discussed, but I do not see the final language unless I'm missing something.
For which, the lesson is closed?
Yeah.
Lesson is closed, we can be changed, this is just required that we.
That's what, okay, thank you, I'm like, I'm trying to look for any type of.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't think we have any discussion on this either, so again, the holidays, rain fog. Okay, so investments, D E A F. Does anybody have any discussion? Okay, I'll propose that we just ratify this. Second it, okay, how do you vote, Jenny? Allison, I'll vote yes. Okay, regarding the, uh, alternative diploma and student significant cognitive disabilities, this is just something we discussed, it really has an impact on K E S because it, it's in regards to the high school, um, so.
So would we need to adopt it?
No.
We don't, okay.
It's, it's just in here, I'm just letting you know what it's for, that's why I just kinda have. And that's it for me. Um. Anything on the safety and security end?
I don't think I can, I don't think I can.
Anything under the Board of Selectmen?
I have not been able to vote because it just never works, but, um, apparently it's pretty fiery over there sometimes, over, uh, ballot machines. But I don't know that that affects us, except for where the voting or what's gonna be happening there, but we'll be having a deliberate session at the top campus. And, um, Harold said he did not realize that he was supposed to come tonight, um. So, or he said he forgot his responsibility to attend because he's been busy, so, um, and distracted, so he, basically, I think it's just the details that I do a bunch of.
Okay. Joint chairs, nothing, superintended evaluation.
We will be, um, I have, I have the questions, I'm gonna give them to you guys tonight, we will listen to Dr. Ryan, uh, talk at the one four, and then we will meet again after that. So you guys, I'll, I'll give you the, um, the goals that we have, that, that, that we've set up, and then you guys can take a look at them and then fill in your stuff, we'll meet. I'll work that and, and.
Excellent. Okay, we can go to few people related matters, if there are any, I don't think there are, anything with personnel? Okay, so now we can jump back on. To manifest and financials.
Okay, great, so, um, did you get the manifests that were in here, are they being signed?
They do have the manifest.
Okay.
And also during this time, we need to get a formal motion, um, to, uh, first and expand the, I'll just.
Okay, okay, perfect. All right, so in your board pack was a current year financial, now, we actually saw a cost decrease and the reason why is we got some reimbursements from a grant. Um, and then we saw a little bit of additional food cost. Did anybody have any questions on the current year financial related to expense? So on the revenue side, here's some fantastic news from the Health Trust, we got some money back, so the reason we got it back is not so great because it's COVID. Um, when the people don't go to the doctors are, the Health Trust saw a surplus, so they returned it to their members. So the, so the Kensington School District receives thirty-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Now, I believe you talked about it in the public hearing that I missed while I was at East Kingston, um, and we would have to have a motion to be able to accept and expend that money. If someone wants to make a motion.
I know who we expect to spend that money.
I'll second it. Any discussion? I'll vote Allison.
Yeah.
Jenny?
Vote yes.
Great, thank you. And did Jonathan wanna read the warrant at this time, is that what we don't want?
Thank you. Okay, warrant articles for twenty twenty-two. Um, Article one, operating budget. Uh, Kensington School District shall raise appropriations as an operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately. The amount set forth on the budget posted with the warrant as amended to vote for the first session of the proposed set forth hearing. Totally, three million, five hundred seventy thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars. Should this article be defeated, the default budget will be three million, four hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred and seven, which is the same as last year. With certain adjustment required by previous actions of Kensington School District, by law of the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with R S A forty dot thirteen to take up the issue of a revised operating budget only. Article two, collective bargaining agreement. See if the school district will vote to approve the cost items included in the collective bargaining agreement reached between Kensington School Board and Kensington Education Association, which calls for the following increases in salaries and benefits at the current staffing level. Physical year twenty twenty-three, estimated increase, one hundred thousand, five, 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 twenty-four, one hundred and twelve thousand, seventy-one dollars, twenty-five, seventy-four thousand dollars, three sixty-one, twenty-six, seventy-one thousand, five seventeen. And further, to raise appropriate one hundred and six, five, five for current physical years, such sum representing the additional cost attributed to the increase in salaries and benefits required by the new agreement over those that would be paid at current staffing levels. Kensington School Board recommends one hundred and six, five, five, five. Majority vote required. Article three. Shall Kensington School District and Article two defeat the governing body to come one special meeting at the auction to address article cost items only? Majority vote. Article four, unanticipated special education expense. Town Kensington School District will vote to raise an appropriate ten thousand to be placed in the special education expendable trust fund previously established for the unanticipated special education cost at Kensington Elementary School. This sum to come from the June thirtieth fund balance available to transfer on July first, no additional amount may be raised from taxation. And the Kensington School Board recommended this appropriation. And lastly, Article five, billing repairs and maintenance, to see if the Kensington School Board District will vote to raise an appropriate ten thousand to be placed in the repair and maintenance expendable trust fund previously established for building maintenance costs at elementary school. The sum to come from June thirtieth fund balance available to transfer to on July first, no additional amount to be raised for taxation. And we want that to go through as well. So there you have it. Any questions?
I just had one more thing I forgot to mention, um, our, our auditors, I know we don't have the same auditor as the other districts, but one of the things that our auditors have requested from the other districts, so we're trying to make it consistent across all districts because it is a best practice. We do sign the manifest at the school board meetings, but sometimes that's after the checks actually go out the door, so our auditors have recommended that we have one board member receive the manifests weekly or every other week, depending on how often the accounts payable is processed, just to give the initial review, so I didn't know which one of you three wanted to be the lucky person to do that. So you'd be receiving an email either weekly or every other week from our accounts payable person, just doing a personal review of the, the payments before the checks get sent. Because sometimes if we wait for the next board meeting, we could be late on a payment and get fined, so we don't, we, we stay at, we stay current. So I didn't know which one of you wanted to be that lucky person.
See, we had, yeah, we have, we, I'm not the only one with holiday fog. We discussed this last board meeting and I, I reviewed and, and signed off on it.
Okay.
That's okay. I feel better now. So we've covered everything, uh, so do I have a, a motion to, uh, we want to, uh, do a adjournment from public and then go to non-public?
Jenny, you said we forgot to do that.
We don't need to do non-public, I'm gonna give you guys the questions, you can take a look, bring them to the one four D A and, uh, make your notes, and then we can meet afterwards, we'll just have to coordinate.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we need to discuss that in non-public? The, um, the letter we got?
Yeah.
At the public floor? So we'll just put it on the agenda for next meeting, I guess, correct? Do we need to take our?
Or we can come up, we can back to personnel.
Okay. We'll loop back to personnel, we'll hand over the mic.
We received this morning the letter of intent for retirement for Ms. Chris Culver, who has been a teacher here for the last twenty-nine years. So she intends to retire at the end of the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So I'll read the letter because she took intent to write it, so let's read it. After thirty-nine years of teaching, twenty-nine of which have been at Kensington Elementary School, I have decided it is time for me to retire. I have full intent to retire at the end of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year per the terms and conditions agreed to with the school, with the district related to retirement incentive, as long as those terms are voted into fulfillment in March of this year. Should this new contract be voted down, I reserve the right to rescind my retirement intention and continue working. This letter is past the January tenth due date to receive my six-day buyback benefit upon retirement and I understand that I will instead receive it in the next fiscal year. It is perfectly fine with me and in fact, I hope that perhaps it can help to get the newly agreed upon contract passed by the voters of Kensington. Deciding to retire has been an agonizing decision for me, my colleagues at K E S are my family and not seeing them every day will be difficult. The children of Kensington have been my inspiration, my joy, and have provided the fulfillment of so many of my life's goals. To say I'll miss them is an understatement. I have a deep and abiding love for this school and town and that will remain in me always. I plan to substitute after I retire and hope that I will be welcomed at K E S in this capacity, as have many other retirees, we just can't stay away. Thankfully for me, with kind regards, Chris Culver.
Thank you, Becky. Okay. So with that, um, we would like to call in a German.
Can I, can I just say real quick that? Chris has been an incredible teacher and, um, really glad that my daughter will be in her last year, just in case she gets there.
Are you making a teacher request?
Nope, I'm not making a teacher request, no, we had that conversation, not making a teacher request. Um, but no, I just wanted to say thank you to Ms. Culver, uh, for being one of the most beloved teachers. Although honestly, I could say that about every single teacher in this building, um, but I just wanted to acknowledge that she's been a, a rock here and to thank her for her service, so, and we'll be sad to see her there.
Thanks for that, Jenny. Um, it is seven-ten?
I guess we make the second or.
I know. Okay, I vote yes.
Yes.
Seven-ten. Thank you, everyone.